Thank you, Mayor Barrett. We have two items on the study session agenda this evening. And the first will be the public art selection process, and our community services director, John Sefton, will speak to this issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We get to talk art again. And we got a two-part action tonight, not really an action, just two points of our conversation. One, to talk about the selection process, and two, to talk about the Pioneer Community Park public art piece. So in 2009, the city adopted the Arts and Cultural Master Plan, which lays out the process and sets the standards for acquiring art. It's very comparable to a number of other organizations and cities from across the nation. These public art projects are consistent with the Cultural Arts Master Plan, which recommends that the city place public art in highly visible locations throughout the community. At our council direction, back on March 5th, we had a study session on the public art. There were two main points. The council wished to see increased community involvement, and the council wished to review two or more of the finalists. So with that, staff came together to take a look at what we previously did with the selection of public art. We tended to set the parameters as part of the city council budget process. Staff went to work to create the call to artists. We had a panel convened of other interested folks in the arts arena, as well as commissioners, some staff, folks from the neighborhoods. That recommendation was whittled down to a handful of finalists that went to the Arts Commission, who tended to provide a final recommendation, and council would then typically approve the project. Recognizing the input that we received back in March, we've got a new, and hopefully improved, process of more circles, which are very artistic in design, and where we really want to focus on utilizing the opportunity for and recognizing the citizen engagement pieces. Obviously, as part of the budget process, we have the opportunity for citizen input. New to this process will be the initial Arts Commission meeting, where again, we will advertise, agendize, and focus on citizen engagement, citizen feedback opportunity, to become a part of the initial part of the process in what the art may come about in being. We'll still do a review panel, and we will create, and I have been working on creating, an Arts Commission, a public art website. Through this website, we'll be able to utilize the finalists, put their artwork on display, put some videos with the artists actually describing where they're coming from with their art concept, and provide an opportunity for feedback from the citizenry on those different pieces. Again, we're really looking for different types of feedback, impressions, not necessarily a vote up or a vote down on the art piece, but to get the general consensus or the general attitude towards the art proposals. We will then again, agendize and make that Arts Commission meeting another opportunity for citizen input. With all of this citizen input, we will bring the culmination of what was received, the different comments, the different areas of public meetings, and bring those forward to you with a recommended piece from the Arts Commission, as well as at least one alternate coming from the Arts Commission. Where again, at the city council, it's another opportunity for citizen input.
That initial citizen input that the city council budget process, that would just be citizen input in terms of what the funding should be overall?
Correct.
That's not on specific art?
Would not necessarily be on a specific art piece. However, as we look at the way that our public art is funded through the Capital Improvement Program, the 1%, we've got a significant amount established to be able to do some very unique public art pieces. The budget process does become the potential for that initial discussion in how and what projects we put forth in the next year's funding.
Are we going to actually have a call out to citizens to come in at that point in the budget, or is it just if citizens are responding to the budget?
It would seem that those that are in tune to the public art process or the interest in public art would make sense. We would see that as we go to the Arts Commission meetings, that we would do very specific radius emails, radius mailings to those that, for example, the Pioneer Community Park, we've already got an established group of citizens that have been involved with the park planning piece. We would again invite them to the Public Arts Commission meeting specifically for the purpose of these programs.
Okay, and so the second citizen input there would be specific projects, or people that have already submitted art pieces, or that's more general also?
Again, more general.
That one's more general.
The very front end, that this is where we would then go and, after this citizen input opportunity, go and design the call to artists, or design the type of art that we are interested in seeing. Make that the first piece of citizen contact, and then work towards securing the professional artists or a plethora of artists. So that first Arts Commission meeting, there's no art to discuss, will truly be art concepts.
Then the next citizen input, it would be kind of a wider number of pieces they might respond to? Is that what you're thinking?
That next one would actually have, after going through the review panel, the review panel that will be made up similar to, has been done in the past, will refine the ability of the artists to deliver the caliber and quantity of the art, if you will, as well as their ability to deliver the type of art that the neighborhood, that we would hope to get through the Arts Commission meeting in the previous step. So at that third point of citizen input would be an opportunity to really focus on a collection of different artists, different art pieces, or work with a specific artist to further define the art concept.
And then the next one would be, really, the review panel would recommend one or two, or whatever, one with at least one alternative by our new council policy, and the citizens would give input to that, to those then?
Correct. Getting our, same thing with several of our other commissions and boards, our goal to get the public to those, to be engaged and to have topics and items that are of interest to specific people, move those commissions around. We've been very successful over the past year in moving the Arts Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission as well, to different areas throughout the city to encourage that citizen engagement.
Might there be more than one art piece? Because one may be going somewhere and another one elsewhere, and you might do that at the same time at public meeting?
Depending upon what we would look at-
For efficiency?
For the budget process and identifying what that capacity could be, very, very, very possible that we could have more than one art selection process underway at the same time, and would utilize the same format. Those would be fun meetings.
I think for efficiency purposes, it might be good to bring, assuming you have more than one, that you're considering-
Correct.
-to bring them together at the same time on that fourth citizen input circle.
Yeah, there's other than the first, as far as the process, the first Arts Commission meeting, again, these are all public meetings. They're typically held, that we're not adding more public meetings, so we're really trying to be efficient and effective with what we're currently using into the process. However, by reaching out, having specific content to invite the public to, we feel confident that this will give the culmination of public feedback for your final and good decisions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, so wanted to also provide a quick look at the potential for the website. We've been successful with reaching out to the community through feedback forums on the website and getting good data that can be captured as part of an Excel database, have the opportunity to put pictures, video, et cetera, just a real quick example of what we could look at for the proposed public art pieces. And this is an example. Staff continue to work on and refine the content and the methodology for the website, but there is actually a live piece right now. So our goal, to increase citizen engagement, mailings to residents, arts commissions near proposed locations, utilizing videos and information from the artists, opportunity for citizens to provide feedback at each of those community meetings, as well as the website. Important to again note, this is not a vote from the community. We're not looking for thumbs up or thumbs down, but it is an opportunity for the Arts Commission and City Council to consider the feedback and make decisions. Anything further?
I guess I have a question. The input from those community meetings, how will that be carried forward? So the board is going to take the input from those community meetings and use it to deliberate?
Correct. I see the public meetings, we have opportunities to direct to the website for the form to provide that feedback as well. Do comment forms at those meetings, and that's exactly what we did with some of the Parks and Recreation Commission meetings. Those are opportunities to compile all of that feedback and put into a spreadsheet. It does end up being a very long document, but it is information that can be carried forward to the panel members. I would see them using some of that in their review and recommendation, as well as the Arts Commission meetings, or Arts Commissioners, using that feedback as part of their assessment of the final art pieces, and then finally, for your consideration as well.
I'm considering the citizen input to be part of the deliberations for the Arts Commission.
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. So as this is an administrative process, the nod tonight will go that route. And then my next point, Pioneer Community Park. You will recall this. We had a good discussion on Thomas Sayer's proposed piece. What we would propose as staff is to utilize the circles again, however, not going back all the way to the beginning, to recognize the additional work and the time and the effort that was put into refine to the final four. We're proposing that we take back to the Arts Commission website, develop that website, develop the communications portal, and then have the additional Public Arts Commission meetings, and then bring back to you with that public feedback on the four finalist pieces for your consideration at a later time.
Injections to that? Sounds good.
We're going to give it a shot.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Next item? So we'll go to the next item.
Sure.
Our next item is the Youth Master Plan update and Peoria Community Council on Youth. You will recall that back in November of 2012, council adopted the Peoria Youth Master Plan. I will say it was the first in the state, and there are several other municipalities that are keeping a close eye on what we're doing to engage our youth and to plan for our youth and to provide for a great place to live and to grow up. The Community Services Department works very much hand in hand with many other city departments and external organizations to help execute the Youth Master Plan. The goals and recommendations are under continuous review for potential for improvement, and those six areas, we've got a strong vision, a strong mission, and six strategic goal areas. I wanted to provide a quick update on where we are under each of those areas. The education and life preparation, a couple of unique opportunities. We created a Recreation Leader Assistant. This is an entry-level position to work in our recreation and sports programming for 16- to 18-year-olds. There's nothing better than work experience and working with HR to create a position specifically for youth in that age range has been very successful. We hired six this past August, and we're going to continue to use them through the fall and into the spring next year. The library programs, we continue to partner with the summer rec programs. Obviously, literacy is a very important element to being successful in life and education and working with our library resources. We continue to provide excellent programming. The Rio Vista Recreation Center continues to research programs from other communities. We're working on developing a strong summer recreation program that involves the older kids, the younger kids, working together, again, to provide better education and life experiences. And then the AMPM Homework Club is just an opportunity with our vast amount of AMPM programming. We've got over 1,300 kids in the program. Having the homework time and the ability to network and to receive guidance during the after-school timeframe proves to be very valuable for the youth in their education. Safety. Safety is predominantly coordinated by a police chief mentor and his efforts in making the community safe. The Youth Master Plan elements are very, very strong and coordinated. The Chiefs Club was a new project we coordinated with him to actually work with officers on the street, find children that needed programming, and we worked with them to be sponsored through recreation programs. We've had a very successful fall, and we'll consider making this a significant or an ongoing program. The Peoria Police Department completed safety meetings with all of our staff. They've always worked with us, but of late, they've really ramped it up. We had six different meetings, working with full-time staff as well as part-time staff. They've received excellent reviews and been very helpful in recognizing the types of safety-oriented issues that we may face in the line of duty that we have in providing recreation programs. So greater awareness programming. UCAN, the ongoing monthly meetings that Chief has with the Community Action Network, a number of those are focused on youth, and we've already begun to network a number of times with different groups that are providing youth services. And of course, Chief has already spoken in previous times about the SRO programs at the different high schools and how successful those are. General Fund Grants. An important thing to note, this past year, 12 youth-oriented nonprofits were funded through the General Fund Grants. Some of these included the Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Theater Works. I'm sure some of you were on the subcommittee to make that, those appropriations. That's just one way that the Youth Master Plan is being met. Play Peoria continues to attract funding, partnerships, to provide scholarships for recreation and leisure programming. Each of these programs are under continuous evaluation for effective and efficient program delivery. And we are using the website again. We've got an opportunity to have a real strong presence. We know that the kids are using the web as more of a communication tool. The team continues to make sure that the right content is available for the teens, both educationally and for programs and activities. In community collaboration, other opportunities, we worked very closely with the Peoria Education Foundation in offering the Peoria Arts and Cultural Festival, which was very successful, another demonstration of good community collaboration. We had great support from Little League and Pop Warner Football to support our request for funding through the Arizona Sports and Tourism Biennial Grant Process, and we'll talk a little bit in the near future about the Community Council for Youth. Civic Engagement, getting youth involved in our civic efforts. The Council Liaison, Youth Advisory Board Council Liaison, will be going to the Subcommittee on Policy and Appointments on September 10th. We've had a couple of applicants that are truly phenomenal, and that will be before you as a body, first week of October, with the goal of having a youth member supporting by mid-October. A total of 160 youth volunteered at Neighborhood Pride programs. The Youth Bill of Rights have created, the Youth Advisory Board has created a survey to get feedback from students to start to develop a Youth Bill of Rights, which is one of the goals of the Youth Master Plan. Last November, we had five Youth Advisory Boards members attend the National League of Cities, and on two different occasions, the Youth Advisory Board got to participate in the post-update, which is all about the Parks Recreation Fund that we have in Peoria. And boy, can they come up with some unique ideas on what they want to do in their free time. And the final goal.
Can you tell me what might be in the Youth Bill of Rights?
Well, it's been a while since I've been a youth, and I have not been involved in that process. I do have staff here that might be able to help with what the discussion has been.
Basically, they're going to be very basic issues in the Youth Bill of Rights that kind of cover everything that would be in a Bill of Rights, safety, everything in the Youth Master Plan is going to be kind of covered in the Youth Bill of Rights. We're putting the survey, the surveys put together just to kind of get a feel from the local high school students as of what they would like in the Bill of Rights. But it's just going to be a very basic, this is what we see as youth as being important in the city.
That would be very interesting. I'm sure the process itself is going to be very interesting.
Right. And we're basically putting it together. They're going to be taking it to their schools by themselves and putting it together. So we're coming forward with it soon.
Okay, thanks.
And the final major goal area is out of school in Richmond, all of that time out of the school day. The Teen Program partners with Theater Works, offering acting comedy voice lessons, all right here at the Peoria Center for Performing Arts. An expanded Extreme Teen Program, which includes a Flagstaff Adventure Course and the Teen Fit Challenge. And we've been working on program evaluations. The program evaluation tool, and coming up with a tool that is generally accepted across the state, and perhaps across the nation as well, has always been a challenge for the out-of-school programmers. I've been personally involved with the Arizona Center for After-School Excellence and a statewide committee working on what the quality standards truly should be between licensing and not licensing and recreation versus education. There's a lot of things to really debate and to end up on a very strong program evaluation tool, focusing on quality and all of those other important elements, including safety and, in essence, providing a great opportunity for children to grow up in Arizona. And of course, the fire department, they're always engaged. Tim Iden helps to teach fire safety at our summer camps and other programs. So with that, any questions on where we're at with the Youth Master Plan and our progress to date?
Yeah, it seems like there are a lot of things. Are they always going to be the same youth, or where are the pools of youth that you're pulling from? Are there different categories of youth?
There's, these principles are very broad, and-
Well, you have a lot of programs.
Yeah, the programs and the activities, and to track them all, we've got a very extensive database of different areas. And Brenda Renke, Recreation Manager, is the tracker. She's making sure and cracking the whip across the community to make sure that we've got good feedback, and really appreciate the detail that she provides in helping us bring this together. You're right, that youth are always changing. They're growing up, right? And we recognize this, even with our Youth Advisory Board, that the demands and the needs for a teenager are certainly different than those for those that are younger. And it's an interesting dialogue, it's an interesting dilemma, and something that we work on as professionals in our different teams to try to provide that unique, safe, learning experience, recreation experience, something that really helps individuals to grow. And many times, that could be as simple as our community events, for example. And those are opportunities for the families to come together and experience something new. Family life matters, community life matters, and those are the types of things that are really driving what this Youth Master Plan is about.
I did just want to mention, one other item that comes to mind that the Youth Master Plan had brought out was something that Councilmember Ames had referred to, is really trying to get a good cross-section of our youth. And as a result, some just great efforts that have gone through in the last year or two, including the work with the Chief Mentor in regard to our at-risk youth, and trying to reach a number of different throughout, geographically throughout the community, and not just going to what we would see as just the normal, usual suspects that we see. And so, just in that sense, I think what we've seen with the wide, diverse program that we've started to implement since the Youth Master Plan, we really have reached a good cross-section of our youth.
So you're going to be reaching out to different categories of youth that don't normally just show up for the summer programs and so on. Okay, good.
That's a perfect segue to our next item, is the Peoria Community Council on Youth. As a goal of tonight's study session, really want to get your vision and concepts and consensus on what the body should look like. The Community Council for Youth is actually within its recommendation number one, within the community collaboration tool, recognizing that it's not just us as staff and council, but it's a community-wide effort to make a great place for kids to grow up. We would see this as facilitated by the Community Services Department, much like we have the Library Board, we have the Parks Commission, Arts Commission, and other areas. Our goal would be to inspire and enhance programs, synergize programming, highlight community strengths and challenges, and build the networking opportunities. Similar to how Chief Mentor has laid the groundwork for creating that UCAN tool, we recognize that the network is really where the value comes from, in having those opportunities to learn and share what's going on. And the network, really, when you think about it, from other government agencies, school systems, not-for-profits, youth-centric private entities, there's a number of businesses in Peoria that are providing youth-type programs, and interested citizens. We've got a number of folks out there that dedicated their lives to making youth better, and we can capitalize on their being a part of the network. The method, we recognize that in addition to ending up with an appointed body, something formal and official, but really want to drive what that body does in developing six bimonthly events with a focus on the Youth Master Plan specific goals, each with educational speakers, learning activities and issues and discussions, and then getting back to that network. We crafted out, our goals and objectives would be to develop the program, establish the recruitment, get the communication. We already have a process for applying for boards and commissions, whether we utilize that or perhaps something separate. We took a stab at picking a few dates over the next year to really focus on and develop the network, develop the educational opportunities around the six goals of the Youth Master Plan. With that-
Questions or comments?
Maybe it's built in here, but the one thing I don't see, and I know when I talk to youth, particularly they become juniors and seniors, they're looking for jobs. The kinds of jobs teenagers used to have are harder to get these days. You know, they used to work at McDonald's and restaurants like that, but now they're hiring permanent employees, and where do youth find jobs? Is that one of the things you're going to be able to address in this complex of programs?
Absolutely. And under Goal One, really providing that life preparation, we've got a number of examples within our department where we are utilizing interns. We're providing that job experience. The youth, the assistant, the recreation assistant, one position, those are the types of jobs that we have. Lifeguarding. Lifeguarding can be hired as early as 16, in some cases 15, depending upon the job assignment, and those are great, skill-based jobs that we provide. A number of lifeguards go on and become firefighters and policemen and teachers. Those are jobs that we have within our control and our purview, but also the ability to create those internship programs. Chris Calcaterra at the sports complex has a number of youth that are learning agronomy and what it takes to be engaged in the-
You're talking about outside Peoria jobs now, for youth?
Those are within Peoria, but what we provide for youth now-
Peoria City.
Right. Translate to skill sets that can be utilized wherever.
So for example, as we look at the timeline and we have the objectives, as we go through life preparation, certainly a key element of that could be job development. And maybe as we develop the programming for that and we talk with the council, maybe we make sure that we look at different ways that we can locate different types of jobs even beyond the city of Peoria itself.
Ms. Carter?
Thanks. I just want to congratulate you for putting the Youth Master Plan into action. Really, the fear was that it was going to sit on the shelf, that it was just going to be a plan that was going to collect dust, and obviously, this is an aggressive action plan that has, that is being facilitated, you know, with the Peoria Community Council. You're going to have people who are actively involved in it, staff- Staff is gonna be actively involved in it. You've got a group of projects, timeline. I mean, it's really exactly what we needed the Youth Master Plan to be. So I really appreciate all the work that you've put into this. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Nice job.
There we go. That's all we had on the study session agenda this evening.
Okay, we are adjourned until regular session at 7:00 P.M.